I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Carrabelle City Commission to order. It's Thursday, January 5th at 5:00 P.M. We're at the City Hall complex and I'd like to ask Commissioner Allen to say the prayer and then we'll say the pledge allegiance to the flag.
For God, Father, and Son, we're so grateful for the beautiful day that you've given us. We're thankful for the year that's before us. We ask that you be with us in our judgments and that we may, as public servants and serving the community, do what's honorable and fair and just for all and be with our meeting tonight and those that are out working in the fields. We ask this in Jesus' name only.
Amen. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, to the government which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral law.
All right then, we'll move forward right on into the consent agenda. That includes our December 1st 2016 minutes and the attorney's invoices. If there's no discussion on that, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve?
Okay, and is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis and a second by Commissioner Walden. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then the motion carries. And then, public comment. Is there any public comment at this time? All right, then, there's no public comment. We'll move to commissioners' reports. Commissioner Walden?
None.
Okay. And Commissioner Mathis?
I have nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Allen?
Yes, I have one question. Since we're going to be pressed for time to go over to the FWC code for the allegation, I would suggest that unless there is some pending issue on the discussion of City Hall, that we postpone that until the next meeting and then we can leave that much earlier. If someone feels there's something has to be said about that, then, you know, we'll say that I think we can get on early enough to show up and I'll just make that more motion if you'd like.
All right, we have a motion regarding tabling the item regarding relocation to City Hall.
That's right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and is there any discussion? I do have one proposal that was turned in for the city to buy a piece of property. If y'all like, I can read that to y'all now. I would, I would say, can we, can we make a, can we address this motion as the meeting moves along because the meeting may move along? And if it looks like we have time, can we?
Just when we get to that item, move to table it or hear this and then move to table it.
Okay.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. Did you have any other reports to report, Commissioner?
I was good.
Okay, all right, that'd be fine. And then we'll note that Commissioner Massey is absent, but we did start the meeting early tonight at 5:00, but we had public notes on that. My report, and I do have the report, I'm surprised Ms. Munson isn't here, but Holiday on the Harbor and Boat Parade Lights was a banner event this year. I want to thank Lisa Munson and the chamber and the multiple volunteers, the business owners for their hard work in putting the event together. I appreciate Santa spending the day in Carrabelle, Pam Knowles Dance Crews taking time out of their busy schedules to entertain us, and I believe it was 24 boat owners who decorated their boats for very exciting boat parade plots. And then back in October, the city submitted an FWC grant application to fund bear-resistant retrofit pits for residential garbage cans to those citizens who requested kits. And I'm pleased to report the city received the $100,000 grant award to place kits on approximately 50 residential containers. The city will host a day for residents to come to City Hall with their trash cans and volunteers will install hardware. The date will be advertised and announced. And we appreciate the FWC staff working with Waste Pro in our area to ensure that no additional fees will be charged for handling retrofit kits after placement on the garbage cans. Y'all may have noticed the Marine Street boardwalk repairs and improvements were completed just before Christmas, as well as a building facade project directly across the street from the boardwalk. They're great additions to the CRA rehab efforts along Marine Street. And y'all please notice that new posts have been placed on that boardwalk on the street side, right next to the gutter. They were placed there to stop vehicles from driving up onto the boardwalk. It was part of that project. Had many times delivery trucks drive up on that boardwalk to make the U-turn to go back towards 98 and they leave a huge hole. Our city clerk, Keisha, who's on vacation, was awarded a scholarship to attend the Ford Bloodplane Managers Association 14th Annual Conference in St. Petersburg, April 4th through the 7th. The scholarship pays for the conference registration and her hotel room for the entire four-day course, and this is going to be a pressure course for her at no cost to the city. And I'm sure everyone saw the recycle facility is removed, and that's due to overwhelming illegal garbage dumping. The Franklin County Recycle Facility in Carrabelle has been shut down until sometime next week. I want to remind the public that the recycle bins for Franklin County program operate, manage, maintain, rules enforced, and funded entirely by Franklin County. The city of Carrabelle has absolutely nothing to do with the recycling program. I spoke to Fonda Davis this morning, who reported the Carrabelle facility will be shut down for about 10 days. The recycle facility will be beefed up, security cameras will be placed, and the recycle bins returned. Mr. Davis reported dumping situation was much worse at the Franklin County facility in Appalachia Cola. The county shut down that facility for just over a week, beefed up the gates and fencing and installed security cameras, and now the household garbage and debris dumping has lessened substantially. I talked with William Massey, who said on Monday morning, the recycle bins here in Carrabelle were overflowing with household garbage. He said the county cannot handle that amount of household garbage any longer, they don't have enough manpower, and there's not enough money. Mr. Davis did report that the Sheriff's Department will be working with the county to enforce the new county debris ordinance that covers the entire county, and that under the direction of the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners on December the 6th, he and the county, he and the county attorney are drafting a mandatory garbage ordinance for the county residents. And then later this evening, I will speak with the legislative, to the legislative delegation to present the draft House bill for dissolution of Fort Airport Authority Senator Mumford, Representative Shears, and bring to their attention legislative funding, funding request for extension of water supply lines in Lighthouse Road area. And Mr. Russell Large will be going to assist with that, that presentation with exhibits. And that's all I have for now. Thank you very much. And then we'll move on to Minovia's report.
Thank you. You should have our amendment in your packet. Just wanted to point out a couple items. One, you'll notice some construction activity at the Ford Street pedestrian crossing that is under construction right now. That's where a pedestrian crossing that connects to the, the new fishing area there at the Bloodplane. And then secondly, Mayor LaPaz already mentioned it, but the Lighthouse Estates funding for sewer project, the Water Management District is considering the sewer portion of that project. And tonight, we'll be addressing the legislative delegation related to the water funding portion of that project. And are we having to answer any other questions, ma'am?
Does anyone have questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Water Park Partnership, Ms. Tamron.
You all have a copy of the report that I turned in yesterday, and there are, there was one wonderful improvement since summer this yesterday, and that is the Department of Historical Resources, after a great deal of prodding and poking over the holiday, all of a sudden discovered that they could approve our report that they've had now for over four months pending approval. So, I think it was, I don't know what, it wasn't really about us, it was really about something altogether different. But anyway, it got approved, and so effective at 8:10 this morning, we got approval to proceed with renovations to City Hall. There aren't really any other major changes in here. The only other issue which you have later on the agenda is the discussion about nominating the Justice Building for membership on the National Register of Historic Places. And otherwise, I think I just wanted to agree with the mayor that this was a very nice holiday on the harbor, and from my personal point of view, I wanted to thank the mayor and Greg for being Christmas elves wars, thank the Fire Department for bringing Santa. It's kind of exciting to everybody and me arrives on a fire truck. And then I wanted to thank Mr. Hartman for his generous donation that helped us get all the candy canes for the kids, and there were an abundance of candy canes this year. We have lots. We were able to get plenty and have them at each of the stores at Santa Wind too as well. So I appreciate everyone's help with that. And then we have something a little special, and I'm gonna let Mr. Allen make that presentation to you all.
Why don't you call Mr. Allen?
Don't, I'll be here.
I was over to the museum the other day, and there was a gentleman in the office, his name is Joe Carp coating? Carp, something like that.
Johnny Corpren.
Okay, good. I wrote it 10 minutes ago, and it's already gone bad. But it's from the Ripley's Believe It or Not, one of the, this was printed in their publication in 1984.
1980 and 1994.
And 1994.
So that's the two pages.
And Ripley's Believe It or Not. And it shows our good sheriff down in there, actually, another good sheriff, up in the precinct, the phone booth. And of course, by the way, we have the original over at the history view family if you want to see it. And the other has to do with the, well, they're both have to do with that, Ripley's Believe It or Not.
Because it has Carrabelle, Florida on it.
Yes, that's because, yeah. It was nominated by people who live out of Carrabelle, out of state, who visited, and back in those years nominated Carrabelle, Littlest Police Station, as something to go in Ripley's Believe It or Not. And I didn't realize Ripley owns 92 locations all over the world. But he brought, he wanted a special, he asked me if I would come and give him a tour on the day that we were closed, and I came down and gave he and his family a tour, and he gave us, he said he wanted to present this to the city, but he's not here at this point. So I wanted you all to see it.
Well, have to find the location to hang it, maybe down this way next to the map.
No, we're gonna put it in that.
Oh, you want to put it in the museum?
Please let me put it in the museum.
Oh, okay, well, sorry.
That's okay.
City Museum?
If you'd rather have it somewhere.
I think he presented it to the museum.
Well, he presented it to the city, but gave it to me, so I just made the assumption I was gonna hang it in the museum. But we can always hang it here. We'll make a photocopy.
Okay. You're welcome very much, Tamron.
It was really not, I mean, it's kind of, I mean, what a shock that was, that he would come visit and just frame that, because they had, they had to actually make it.
All right.
But I wanted you all to see it, how we're gonna let it down, so we don't want to, please. Greg?
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
No, I don't.
Okay. Economic Development Council? Okay. The Carrabelle Aviation Advisory Board Chair is not here, but he submitted his report. Did y'all have a chance to review that? Okay, and then, Mr. Bryan, would you like to speak on behalf?
Yes, Tim Solomon is chair, not vice chair. Tim's in Indiana, and so being a good Samaritan, helping a couple come back to Carrabelle and live here to be, to be a new day.
Okay.
This mission.
Very good.
Back to Monty.
All right.
Be at the airport and move the tank.
Okay, that's very good, thank you. They will be moving the tank next week.
Right.
At the airport, and the cement was poured the past couple weeks, and it's ready to seal and it's ready to go. And the hangar renovation project is rebid and, and we'll be addressing a renovation, excuse me, a resolution on that in just a few minutes. Okay. And then, Mr. Hartman, do you have a report?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Courtney, do you have a report?
I just have two things. I wanted to announce that we will be having a planned zoning meeting this month, it'll be on the 19th, I think.
The third Thursday?
The third Thursday, at 4:30. And then we did receive the results from the Lighthouse Special Needs Grant that we had applied for, and we were not funded for this cycle. We'll keep trying to apply for some grants out there.
And that was the $500,000 grant that we applied for, but we jumped through a lot of hoops, did a lot of resolutions for that grant, so we're, we're ready to rock and roll now if another one comes up. Get so pecked at trying to get the application in. And then the city clerk is on vacation, so she has no report. And then we'll move right on to public hearing, and we'll have the second reading by Mr. Hartman of Ordinance 467 regarding our municipal dock facilities.
All right. This is an ordinance by title, Ordinance 467, an ordinance of the City of Carrabelle, Florida, providing for amendment of ordinance 441, an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for use and operation municipal dock facilities, providing for appeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, to the extent such conflict and establishing effective date. And this was basically our amendment and update to the dock ordinance that we went through those at length at a fair number of, number of meetings.
Yes, I believe it's been on the agenda since July, if not, it has certainly been on the agenda since August. So are there, is there any further discussion regarding this dock ordinance amendment, actually? Is there any discussion?
I move to approve.
All right then. And is there a second regarding this dock ordinance?
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Allen and a second by Commissioner Walden. Is there any more discussion then? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, then the motion carries. All right, and item number two under public hearing, Resolution 01-2017 regarding our Section 504 grievance procedure. And these, these ordinances that were, these next two ordinances are regarding, they need to be passed regarding handicap accessibility, and if we don't have handicap accessibility, what is our transition plan to make the repairs or the upgrades as needed? I'm sure everyone received copies of these resolutions and the evaluation that Fred Fox did and the transition plan. He's given us a few years, for instance, we, front door of our City Hall, wherever it may be, has to have an electric door open, I believe a button that you push that would come open for someone who couldn't open the door herself. And we need, at Sands Park, a handicap parking place, and Mr. Large has been made aware of that since we are gonna be doing a parking lot there with our FERC Act grant, so we're just gonna include that. So are we ready for the reading then?
Sure.
Okay.
Resolution 01-2017, City Carrabelle, Florida, Section 504 grievance procedure. Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 provides that no qualified disabled person shall solely on the benefit basis of handicap be excluded from participating, participation in, denied benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any program or activity funded in or in part with federal financial assistance. The City of Carrabelle, Florida has completed its Section 504 self-evaluation guide and its transition plan, which detailed the modifications and corrective actions needed to allow handicap accessibility relative to the city's public facilities. Self-evaluation guide and transition plan are on file at the city clerk's office in City Hall and are available for public inspection upon request. In effort to comply with all provisions set forth in Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, the City of Carrabelle, Florida, here in established as the following grievance procedure by passage of Resolution 01-2017 dated January 5, 2017. Number one, the City of Carrabelle, Florida has updated its Section 504 self-evaluation guide and has determined to what extent it is a facility, what practices, communication system, programs, and services are accessible to handicapped individuals. Number two, the City of Carrabelle, Florida has appointed a city manager as its Section 504 coordinator. The Section 504 coordinator shall be responsible for the city's overall compliance with Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and further shall coordinate the implementation of the transition plan with the respective city departments. Number three is the policy of the City of Carrabelle to eliminate discrimination against any person who has a physical or mental impairment, which substantially limits one or more major life activities, has a record of such impairment, and is regarded as having such an impairment. Number four, any handicapped person or purse, or groups representing handicapped persons that feel that a grievance is warranted relative to accessibility to handicapped persons in public facilities, employment practices, communication systems, programs, services, et cetera, under the direct control of the City of Carrabelle shall submit such grievance in writing to the city manager's office. The city clerk, number five, the city clerk shall coordinate the response to grievance with the Section 504 coordinator and shall issue the city response within 30 days of receipt of said grievance. If the person or group feels that his or her complaint has not been sufficiently addressed by the city clerk, an appeal may be made to the City of Carrabelle City Commission. The City Commission shall render its decision relative to the grievance within 30 days of hearing the complaint. At any point, the aggrieved may register a complaint with the Department of Economic Opportunity, 107 East Madison Street, MSC 400, CaliC, Florida, 32399, or the CDBG, oversea Gate, and see the place at the time of complaint. Number six, all complaints registered at the local level shall have a response from the City Commission or human, city, human resource officer within 60 days of lodging the complaint and/or appeal. In the event the aggrieved parties exhaust all appeals without a decision satisfactory to him or herself, he or she may pursue legal channels in an attempt to achieve satisfaction. Number seven, file all written grievances and/or complaints, and the city's response to said grievance or complaint shall be maintained and available for the city inspection, public inspection upon request. Duly adopted by the City Commission of the City of Carrabelle, Florida this 5th day of January 2017.
All right, is there any discussion on this resolution, adopting a 504 grievance procedure? Any discussion? Would anyone care to entertain a motion on this resolution?
I want a motion.
Okay. And do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, a second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, then, item number three, Resolution 02-2017, and this is adopting the evaluation plan and the transition plan. Mr. Hartman?
All right. Resolution 02-2017, resolution of the City of Carrabelle, Florida updating compliance with Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, adopting a handicap accessibility self-evaluation plan, adopting a transition plan for handicap accessibility, and adopting a Section 504 grievance procedure. Whereas the City of Carrabelle desires to comply with the Section 504 handicap accessibility requirements of the community development block grant programs, and have all publicly accessible city-owned facilities made handicap accessible. And whereas the City of Carrabelle has completed a review of city-owned facilities accessible to the public for aid of handicap compliance, and whereas the City of Carrabelle desires to make all city-owned facilities accessible to handicapped individuals, and whereas the City of Carrabelle is establishing compliance and grievance procedure to process any complaints, including those related to handicap accessibility, the treatment of handicapped individuals, and the elimination of discrimination against any person who has a physical or mental impairment, which substantially limits one or more major life activities, has a record of such impairment, and is regarded as having such an impairment. Now therefore be resolved by the City Commission of the City of Carrabelle as follows. Number one, that the City of Carrabelle hereby adopts the following 24 CFR Part 8 self-evaluation plan, and number two, that the City of Carrabelle hereby adopts the following 24 CFR Part 8 transition plan. Number three, that the City of Carrabelle hereby adopts the following Section 504 compliance grievance procedure. And number four, that the City of Carrabelle affirms the city manager as the person responsible for implementation of the plan. This resolution adopted this 5th day of January 2017.
All right, is there any discussion regarding adopting this self-evaluation plan here? We had a copy of that, and the transition plan, appointing Ms. Courtney as the person responsible to implement the plan, and we, and adopting our grievance procedure, which we just did a resolution on that. Is there any, any more discussion? All right, would someone like to make a motion regarding this?
Motion, Joe.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Walden. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And then the motion carries. The next item under public hearing, item four, Resolution 03-2017 regarding a supplemental agreement to the joint participation agreement with the FDOT regarding grant funding.
All right. City of Carrabelle Resolution 03-2017, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a supplemental joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation to provide 100% grant funding to construct a parking, parking apron, provide additional aircraft parking and access to planned hangars and fuel farm, and mitigate deficiencies in the annual inspection report for state airport licensing and upgrade of existing hangar doors, including hangar upgrade improvements. Whereas the City of Carrabelle needs 100% grant funding to construct parking apron to provide additional aircraft parking and access to planned hangars and fuel farm, and mitigate deficiencies in the annual inspection report for state airport license, upgrade existing hangar doors, including existing hangar upgrade improvements. Whereas the City of Carrabelle Commission wishes to take advantage of the generous offer of the Florida Department of Transportation to provide 100% of the funding and make these needed improvements to the Carrabelle Thompson Airport, now therefore be resolved by the City Commission of the City of Carrabelle, Florida, assembled in regular meeting on January 5, 2017, that the mayor be, and she is hereby authorized and directed, to negotiate and execute a supplemental joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation. The document necessary to receive funding from the Florida Department of Transportation is follows. Florida Department of Transportation participation in the amount of $229,276, which is equal to 100% of the anticipated project cost. City of Carrabelle participation, 0% for total project cost of $229,276. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be attached to the joint participation agreement between the City of Carrabelle and the Florida Department of Transportation when fully executed, adopted by the Carrabelle City Commission on this 5th day of January 2017.
Okay, thank you. And so is there any discussion or questions regarding this joint participation agreement with the FDOT grant funding in the amount of $229,276 for air, parking facilities and annual inspection and update, airport licensing, and upgrade of the hangar doors and renovation of the hangars? Is there any discussion? Would someone like to make a motion to accept this resolution?
I want a question.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Walden. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? And then the motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to new business. Item one, discussion of possible action concerning Bay Media's request to submit to the Department of Economic Technical Planning Assistant Grant Application to place geographic information system, a GIS system, interactive mapping tool on the City of Carrabelle website. And Ms. Cindy Clark is here, and she has made a presentation similar to this back a couple of years to the CRA board, and we do have a GIS and interactive mapping tool on the CRA website this time. For those of you that I don't know, Cindy Clark is, and this is my husband, Chris Clark, and we have Bay Media Services.
Back up, ma'am.
Oh, sorry.
Mike.
Thank you. The, we owe Bay Media Services, and it's a, it's a. Turn her, turn her on.
And hold it up to your mouth.
So we can record.
They're close.
I'm sorry.
There's that bit?
Oh, yeah.
Come on closer.
The, I would like to request permission to.
Hold it back up.
Ask for a small planning grant from the Department of Economic Opportunity on the city's behalf to create a comprehensive online GIS map for the City of Carrabelle. This would be similar to, but expanded upon what we have already created for the City of Carrabelle CRA district. It'd be very similar to, to maps that I've. It'd be very similar to maps that I've created for the City of Apalachicola and most recently for Franklin County. We have found that it's a valuable planning tool, both for the city and their planning department. It's great information for the public, and we've found that particularly for the development industry, the real estate, and just commercial development in general, that it's been a very valuable tool. The layers that we would propose to create and host and embed on the City of Caravello site would include all of the layers that exist now on the city CRA map, which include lot by lot, block by block. They would have aerial imagery, land use zoning, your base flood elevation information from FEMA, natural resource data as it exists for wetlands and soils. We can embed the CRA's district boundaries as a layer on the map if you would prefer. Each of the map parcels is linked to the property appraiser's office, so when you click on a lot or a block, you go directly to, you can go directly to the property appraiser's office and find out all the information about that lot. And that's really valuable information for people looking to buy or for sell property in the area. We've done these now for several years. We've created one for the City of Apalachicola, and of course, we appreciate being able to create one for the Caravello CRA district a couple of years ago, for Franklin County and various groups. So we're real comfortable and very knowledgeable about how to do these. I think it was interesting, I was looking back, and you can see on the very last page of the handout, and these are just screenshots of your, the CRA district map, the City of Apalachicola map, but on the last page, I went in and I looked at the analytics for the Caravello CRA district map. This is, of all the maps that I've created, probably the busiest map. You can see that over a period of less than a month, there's been over 1,700 hits on this map, and average views per day of cities. That's really important and big numbers for such a small community. So somebody here is paying attention to this map.
So you're saying from December the 6th to January today, January the 5th, there's been 1,785 views on this?
People are getting on that map. Somebody's paying attention to that map. It's very interesting. This is something that would not cost the city at all. It's a technical assistance grant that is available through the Department of Economic Opportunity, and I'm just asking permission to apply and agree this on behalf.
Okay, so, and I talked to our clerk, who does, you know, a lot of the zoning and planning work for the city. She does most all of it. And she wants to make sure that it will include all the zoning categories throughout the city. And that, and she wants it to be, you know, user-friendly, so, and as does the city administrator, so that they can refer the public and the real estate agents to these maps. I noticed that the City of Apalachicola was more user-friendly than the Franklin County.
And that's the template that I would propose to the City of Caravello. Franklin County is just the, it was, we had to go down a different road.
And can it, it can be used as a zoning reference?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then you, there is a mapping service fee, but you say that that's not going to be very much negligible?
The, all the maps that I administer right now cost in service credit. This is an Edgeread online product, and that I pay approximately $100 to $200 a year for all my service credits for all of my maps, so I would anticipate that this map would certainly not ever exceed $200 a year, more like $100 of that.
And then your, Bay Media's charges and services, that will be.
Will be covered by the grant. Or, you know, ongoing, some changes down the road.
And then, okay, and how long would the services and fees be covered by the grant?
For a period of five years.
Five years. Okay. Then you did say that you would embed the CRA district boundaries so that that could change things. There's another, we have another special zoning that a lot of folks tend to get into trouble or get confused with, that it's not told, you know, when the property is being sold. We have a special zoning regarding alcohol consumption. Is there a way that that could be, is that an overlay district? Is that what, how, would that be an overlay district?
It'd be overlaid, just be 500 feet from any of the churches, so any of the property that was in 500 feet of a church, I don't think that that would be difficult to.
You know, just get a list of what, where it applies.
What we do now, the staff does now, they'll click on the property in question, and the appraiser site, there's a button, radius, and they'll key in 500 feet, and then they'll find all the properties, or they can key and click on the church in question, and then they'll put off the properties.
We can create that as a layer so that you can look at it, and please stop if this isn't wrong, that when you click on that, when you click on that layer, those parcels would come up with a radius around it, and so you can see at glance where those areas.
Okay, so that would help the public to know and to understand, because sometimes certain things are, if they're, this is going to give you a flood zone also. So sometimes agents or people are out looking on their own, for sale by owner, you know, they just, they just don't think about looking at all of the different items that come up. Okay, well, that would be, that would be good. Do y'all have questions regarding this? Does anyone, Courtney, do you have any questions? Well, what do you think?
Let's go with it.
Okay. I, I think since, you know, it would be five years, the services and fees are working, that maybe we have a contract for five years to start out with. Since, you know, technology changes and maybe, you know, we don't know, in the future, this may become obsolete, and we don't want to obligate the commission or the city, you know, way in the future to be obligated in something. And we could start out with a five-year contract, and then folks down the road could decide whether or not they want to keep it or move, upgrade, or whatever. What do y'all think about that?
It's a great idea.
Okay. And hopefully it will be a good aid to our staff and the rest of us. All right, then, do we, can we entertain a motion regarding this proposal?
I'll make a motion to entertain it.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis, and a second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. All right, then, we thank you for coming to make your presentation. All right, then, the next on the agenda, right along, is discussion of possible action regarding adding Old City Hall to the National Historic Places Registry. And so, did you want to come up and speak anymore about it, Ms. Tamara?
No.
Okay, we discussed it at the December 1st meeting, and Ms. Tamara, and you're representing the Caravello Waterfront Partnership in this, or the Caravello Pairs? So just a minute.
The Waterfront Partnership does the historical piece, but it's the Historical Society that actually technically is a common name. The Caravello Historical Society, which is the museum. We run the museum.
So she's requesting to proceed with a formal application to put the Justice Building or the old City Hall building on the National Registry of Historic Places. Are you all familiar where the Apalachicola City Hall proper is, the little tall two-story building that's an old cotton mill? That building is on the National Registry of Historic Places, and they are operating City Hall in there. So I don't, you know, if we ever needed that building for City Hall. But if we need the building for something other than a museum, it could be used especially for public use. Is that correctness, Tamara?
Absolutely.
Okay. So is there, does anyone have questions regarding this?
I'll go for it. I'll make a motion to.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, and a second by Commissioner Mathis to allow the Caravello Historical Society Waterfront Partnership to proceed with formal application for the Justice Building replacement on the National Registry of Historic Places. All right, any more discussion? Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then the motion carries. All right, then, we've got a few minutes, and we'll move on to old business. Item two, discussion of possible action concerning relocating City Hall. And we did discuss a motion briefly to table this, but I think we could, we could take the two offers, I know we've got two offers, Mr. Jackson's offer, and then review Ms. Bethany's discussion, and have a little bit of discussion, and then see how the time goes. So we'll listen to Ms..
All right. I have a proposal from George Jackson to sell the property yawns to the City of Caravello. As per this date, I propose and agree that I would sell my property, known as the Old Pear Tree and Mini Mall, he gives a legal description and the tax ID number, to the City of Caravello, Florida, for a cash price of $150,000. I would further propose and agree to offer honor financing terms to the city as follows. $50,000 down payment at closing, $50,000 per year, plus interest rate at 4% for the next two years. And that was from George Jackson on the Old Pear Tree and Mini Mall for lot 10, all of lots 4, 5, 6, 14, and 15, and parts of lots 8, 13, and 16.
Is that just the property, or is this the Mini Mall?
Yes.
What, not, not the U.S. shake building?
Not the U.S. shake building, the one beside it was the Shanghai?
Yeah, but just the Mini Mall.
And I think, is it the other smaller building? Mr. Hawker can answer any question.
Yes, please. If you, if you have a map even, or something from the property appraisers.
Well, I think it would be easily understood if I were to give you a better definition of the property. It's back across the street, a highway from Millander's, you know, hear me? From Millander's Seaford, and it's basically half of the old Mini Mall property is the westernmost half. It includes the old school buildings. And then what, at one time, what, I don't know, I call it the Monkey Bar. It used to be a facility there for selling liquor or whatever, and it would be those two buildings, plus those additional, all those lots that we described there.
At this point, I would suggest that we put this on your list of.
I don't have it here.
No, you don't have this. This is a brand-new offer.
Oh, yes?
Yeah, this is a brand-new offer today. And we've got, we've got quite a few offers at this moment, and I, at this point, I would suggest to put it on the list of.
I just had one on the Mini Mall.
Yeah, the Mini Mall, you do.
But there's more to it than that.
Well, this, the Mini Mall was suggested by a real estate agent, Mr. Hawker's real estate, but by Robin Hall. The Mini Mall is the U.S. shake building.
Next to.
To the east, next to the, the.
Okay, so this is.
This is the old schoolhouse Mr. Hawker is offering, in behalf of Mr. Jackson, the old schoolhouse where the Shanghai restaurant used to be.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And then the, and then to the west, the next building, that's, there was.
The Tid Shack, sort of.
Yeah.
Yeah, antique shop.
Yeah, the monkey, Flying Monkey was in there.
Flying Monkey.
Those two buildings. So this is a brand-new offer today to the city.
Yeah, one of the interesting things about this protective property is the fact that it goes through from Highway 98 all the way to the city street behind it. And if that city street were opened up, it's pretty much not utilized at this time. If it were opened up, two things could happen. The city could build a building on what is already a historical site, because they own school. And that's kind of interesting. And the other thing is that you could have a drive-through window for paying your utility bills, or have you could call 98 and pull up to the lady's deal, and go right on out the other street, which other street is, I think, where the Health Department and all of that is on that street.
Is that old school building on your, on your list in your historical survey?
It's on the list, but it's not eligible for cash and register at this point, because it's been altered. But it's possible that should it be reverted back some to what it was before it might be. But at the time in 2009, when it was put on the, when the survey was done, it was not eligible for the registry. But we are trying, we're actually spending a lot of effort right now trying to learn the name of that school when it was in use, and nobody seems, it had a name, a formal name, but we've never been able to find any that's not listed except as high school in moment.
It's interesting also to note that if that building were to be renovated, it's currently about 9,600 square feet under roof, which is the size of that. But it, it wouldn't use a lot of work. It would've been sitting there back in a long time.
And would there be problems, Ms. Tamara, with demolition of that building?
It's.
As far as historical value?
No, I mean, nothing other than if there was emotional attachment by individuals in the city, but there wouldn't be any, I don't believe it has any kind of historical covenants on it at the moment.
What happened in terms of the site, if it were demolished, is the site then qualified as a historical site, or is there such a thing?
There is such a thing, and it probably could get maybe to the point of maybe having a marker that says this was historically the location of the school that was built this year and back here.
If I have any questions that I could.
Was this where we have an alleyway through there that we closed, and when the other fellow opened up the mini market?
It's next door to that location.
I know it's next door, but there was an alleyway right through that whole section.
Yes, sir.
That's what we closed. Yep, okay, no problem.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we thank you, sir. We'll put it on the list of potential candidates here. Okay, thank you. And you have written, you have the written proposal?
Yeah, I do have his written proposal. And then our next one was the senior citizen's property that was brought to us last month. They still haven't got back with us on a price yet, but they did write us, let us know that they are interested still in selling us that property.
She said, Ms. Bethana wrote back, and she said that they are discussing with their attorney, the senior center's attorney, at their monthly board meeting and hope to reach consensus regarding a proposal to present to the city. So we, you know, we've got quite a few options in front of us, and I've talked before that we need to have a strategic plan. Mr. Hartman, have you heard any, had any correspondence with the school board?
I have none.
Has anyone heard anything from any of the school board members that they can report to us? Okay. I'm certainly not going to suggest that we make any kind of a motion regarding any of these properties until we have the full board. But I would like to ask, we scheduled a workshop in February, and I would like to ask that we say, first of all, we can't do anything until we can determine what the city can afford. And as Mr. Millander said when he was here, he said, whatever the city can afford, that is our driving force. And that will set into motion the direction that we can take and how fast we can arrive at the end goal. So I feel like we need to go ahead and have some bank representatives come and speak to us, possibly speak to, if we can schedule a workshop in February, come speak to us then. That would give staff time to contact. They can contact Centennial Bank. They can contact the USDA, just like Mr. Butler. I researched that online. The USDA does small loans, business loans to small rural businesses, small communities, water sewer enterprise. water sewer enterprises, nonprofits. We could have Florida League of Cities come and talk to us. They assist with selling bonds, so that we can get an idea of what, what we might qualify for. Will they loan us on the demo cost of this building? Will they loan on vacant land purchase? Will they loan on site development, new construction? Will they loan on an old building purchase? Loan on remodeling costs, furniture, landscaping, exterior lighting, parking facility? So I think we need to have, if y'all would like to entertain it, I would request a motion, probably first of all, for a workshop in February.
I'll make a motion, have a workshop in February, plus I even want to do it.
All right, y'all take a look at it. I can't, well, we have a commission meeting on the second, and then we've got a CRA meeting on the twenty-first, and I've got a couple of other meetings on the seventh, fifteenth, and twentieth, but any other time?
About the fourteenth.
And what day week is that?
It's Valentine.
It's Valentine.
Oh, Valentine.
Perfect.
Okay.
I take that back.
Okay. You did that on purpose.
I've been accused of a lot of things.
Trying to get out of something.
Trying to get out of something?
Yeah.
What about the seventh? Is that too early?
The seventh, I...
The second. That's the second Tuesday. First Tuesday?
I, I can't, I have a meeting on that day.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Anybody in there?
Any of those are fine?
Those are three fine.
All right, we want to give staff time to contact some people to, make y'all decide. So, let's see, we've got, our CRA meeting isn't until the twenty-first, so we could, the thirteenth would probably be okay. Does that seem okay with you, Ben?
Sure.
All right, so Monday the thirteenth? Is that all right, Mr. Walden, Mr. Mathis?
I'll have to look at my schedule.
Okay.
You got a hot sober scalp.
It's just logitech.
Do we have a time? What time would you want? What time, Mr. Mathis? Would be good for you, since your calendars?
Well, I get up around twelve, so anytime is...
All right.
Get up and crack.
All right then, so the thirteenth, y'all say what time? Four o'clock? Is that too early, too late?
Four o'clock, probably.
All right. And maybe, you know, we can, we'll advertise it as well. All right, so the thirteenth at four o'clock, February. Do we need a motion for that?
I have a motion, Mr. Allen.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, and a second by Commissioner Walden, workshop February thirteenth at four PM. Okay. And we'll advertise that. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then the motion carries. Okay, then we'll go back and ask you if you all would like to make a motion to have some bank representatives come and speak to us during that workshop, so that we can kind of get an idea of what we can afford.
I don't believe we need a motion, but I can do some.
Okay. I mean, I just don't know how, any way that we can move forward unless we know what we can afford, and what these banks will know on.
Charge it.
Charge it?
Charge it.
Do we have a credit card?
Yeah, I have one, but it's maxed out.
Okay. All right then. And then what we also need to know is what is it, we need, we've got some gestimate, fair guesstimates from Mr. Jimmy Crowder and Cross Environmental Services regarding demolition of this building. And we need to know, really, what is it going to cost to demo this building? Is it going to be a clean demo, or hazardous demo? So we, this, this, this next workshop would be a good time to give us an idea on what it's going to cost to demo this building. And then we'd also get an idea from these banks on whether or not they loan on that demo.
Courtney?
Well, you were making a list there of things that need to be done. If you put that down, I think it'd give us some...
For the Melander building?
No, no, give us a quote on demolishing this one.
No, he hasn't.
He was way under the rest.
No, he hasn't talked to me about giving us a quote on this one. I talked to him about giving him a quote on the Sonola building. That was him.
We did, we did motion for that here in the CRA, just to get a kind of a good guesstimate on what it might cost to demolish that building in the CRA district. So do we want to have Courtney contact two or three or four quotes? Would you, would she have to advertise for that, Mr. Hartman?
Again, if we're just getting, calling informal quotes, and we're not getting, if she asks for those, she won't be able to bind anybody to them. If someone calls, I mean, if she asks, and they come by and walk through and say, hey, I think I need it done for two twenty-five, that's just going to be for our discussion purposes.
Okay.
And if we try to pin one on one, that they're all going to need to, we won't be able to hold them to it.
All right.
But at least it'll be, it'll be helpful for us to get a little more...
So do y'all want her to go, call up three votes, or four, four votes? What do you think? What do you think, Courtney?
Can I get three or four?
Okay, all right. Do we need a motion on that?
No, shouldn't we just bring us that information for the workshop?
I, I think, this is my, my opinion, but I think that we need to go ahead and advertise for any additional offers, offers for potential relocations. I feel like we need to go ahead and put an advertisement in the paper, one week or two weeks, I don't know about that part. Advertise, we're accepting offers for vacant property, property with a building on it, for possible relocation of City Hall. All offers must be in written form, and we need to, if we advertise, we should have a deadline for accepting those offers, just like we do bids. And then set a state in that advertisement that we will accept no more offers after that stated deadline until further notice. Because we can't move forward at all when we're constantly bombarded with offer after offer every week, or every month, I should say, excuse me, every week. So it's hard to know, we can't make a decision. We're working on one, one item, and then all of a sudden, we've got an offer, and then that, that puts the other item on the back table. But we need, we need to gather up what offers we have, allow the public to make their offers, gather them up together, and start a process of elimination like you suggested last time. And then if we, if there's nothing that works for us, and our needs, our special needs, and our funding that's available, we'll advertise again for more offers. Now, most likely, we'll need a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. All right then. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis, a second by Commissioner Walden, to advertise for offers with a deadline, and not, and then, and state that we won't accept any more offers after the stated deadline until further notice. I don't know when the deadline would be, but hopefully it would be before the next, should it be before the next commission meeting at the first of February, or before the next workshop?
I would say before the workshop.
Okay. All right. Okay, so everybody agrees on the workshop, so...
Maybe a week before the workshop, so that we have all that information before.
Okay, a week for ten days or something, so, okay. So give yourself plenty of time to compile the information. All right. Okay, is there any, any discussion then on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, then the motion carries for the advertisement. And then we, we motioned or discussed at the last meeting for Mr. Hartman to try to continue communications with the school board. We have talked about briefly offering the gym and property it sits on to the school board. Maybe we'll, maybe we should table that discussion until the next meeting at our February meeting, and talk about offering, making an offer to the school board. You know, we, we did talk about offering in the gym and squaring off the property, and they could have all the property to the east, and maybe put the nest in the gym. So that might be something we could discuss. Or offer to assist with repairs for the nest to be located at the building house. So we do need to work on that situation as well as find out our funding that's going to be available. So, does anyone else have something to say on this? I'm sorry, I threw an old talking, but somebody has to take a bull by the horns here, so... Anything else, sir?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, then would someone like to call for a motion to adjourn?
Well, I don't have a call, but I'll just do it, make a motion to adjourn.
All right then.
I'll second.
Okay. And that's right, you don't have to call for it. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries, and we'll see you in Apalachicola. Thank y'all very much.